...with my highest esteem to counsel all those who are serving in positions of authority and responsibility.
Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, yes, this is Nada here, Mr. So, this is Juan.
President.
This is Bush.
President. Okay. I'd like to take this item, item number five, by my next presentation and other post-employment benefits, OPEB funding program, Rhode Island into Local Risk Management Trust, made discussion by council, what are their action authorization, signature. We have, I need you to explain this, explain this to us, and due to the inclement weather, she lives down in South County, I'd like to give her an opportunity to get home safely.
Very much appreciated.
Okay, your motion to move it up?
Second.
Okay, motion by the chair, second to council itself. May I further discussion, here you have it. Now, Turk, over, over, please.
Ms. Allen, yes, this is Nada, yes, Mr. So, this is Juan.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay? My name is Colleen Bazzione, I'm the Director of Operations and Member Services for Rhode Island into Local Risk Management Trust, and thank you again for moving me up on the agenda, greatly appreciated in light of the weather tonight. So, what we've, I've been invited here to speak to you about is other post-employment benefits. Our organization, and I like to say it's the big T versus the little t, the trust, the Rhode Island into Local Risk Management Trust, currently right now, we provide property liability, workers' comp, health and dental for the town of North Smithfield, and one of our newer programs that we've offering to our membership as a result of members asking for help and assistance in this area is an OPEB funding program. And so, our first member joined June 4th, 2015, so we're about 10 months old now. We have 16 members as of last week, we just had our newest member join, and we have about $25 million right now in contributions that have been made to the OPEB funding program. This is meant to be a very turnkey operation, I did provide you packets of information, so you can follow along if you so choose to. What we've done is the trust, the big T trust, is the program administrator for the little t OPEB trust. Basically, we looked at all options of whether or not we should be hiring staff to support the program that we have, or if it would make sense for us to contract with an outside entity that has a better expertise in doing so. We chose the latter after our investigation of all options, and we've partnered with PARs, which is Public Agency Retirement Services, they have been in the business for over 30 years in providing OPEB trusts to public sector entities. Through our relationship with PARs, we are then able to access our investment manager of Vanguard and our trustee and custodian, which is US Bank. I'm not sure that our individual members would be able to access those entities individually, you would with PARs, but not with Vanguard or US Bank directly for an OPEB trust. What we've done is tried to make this so that the OPEB trust is functioning as a GASB 45 compliant, and GASB 45 is a financial recognition, I'm sure Jason has briefed you on that, but basically, in order for this OPEB trust to be GASB 45 compliant, it has to be considered an asset and an offset a liability. Basically, it has to be considered an irrevocable trust, and it has to be held entirely for retiree health benefits only, which would be vision, life, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna cut it for a quick second. Just to explain how we currently have this, all we have is an operating line item to fund a future trust. So, currently, everything that's passed in our operational budget for OPEB is stuck in a side savings account at a point, whatever, 5% earnings. It's not an entity like this trust that's set up separate, that operates as its own entity. Right now, we just have a savings account with money in it. So, just so you know, we're not here yet, but this is where we want to go.
And we'll circle back on why that's important, and what the differential is in that when we get to the funding component of it. But basically, this, our organization has set up this OPEB funding trust, as I mentioned, as a result of member request. We've also worked closely with state, the governor's office, with the treasurer's office to make sure that they are okay with us setting this up. Back in 2012, we had legislation change for us so that we were able to actually offer this type of program to our members. And our goal is basically that all of the work has been done for you, that if you were to set up your own OPEB trust on your own, you would have to go out and get your GASB compliance IRS one theme ruling, you'd have to get all the legal work done, you'd have to have all the paperwork done, you'd have to have tax exempt, IRS tax exempt status reviewed, et cetera. So, what we've done is through this program, by, if you choose to adopt the resolution that has been presented to you either tonight or in future dates, we would then take on all that responsibility, and basically, it's a turnkey operation that all of the work has been done for you, and I believe all the documents have been forwarded on to you for review as well, the legal documents that would need to be signed, et cetera. But basically, the most important thing is that we will make sure that you are always, your OPEB trust would always be in compliance with state and federal laws that relate to irrevocable trusts. Members ask, so if I put in all of this money and it's irrevocable, and I can, can I ever get it out? You can get it out to obviously pay for retiree health cares at any time that you so choose to, you obviously have to show proof that you're paying for those, or life, retiree life or dental, any of those benefits. Secondly, if you have funded your OPEB liability and there is no more liability for the town, we obviously do not need to keep that money anymore, and it is returned to the town once your OPEB liability has been satisfied, which is a good thing. So, what we'll do is, although you're looking at, when you join here, the benefit of joining the Rhode Island into Local Risk Management Trust OPEB funding program is the economies of scale, because you would be joining with other municipalities and school districts in Rhode Island, you would have the benefit of lower costs associated with the fees. So, there is no money to join, however, there are monthly fees that are paid to PARs, there are monthly fees that would be paid to Vanguard and to US Bank for, you know, doing the work on your behalf to make sure your investments are safe and everything is in compliance. So, the trust, our trust, never would see any of the money, we are just really the program sponsor, we kind of do all the work, but we're the puppeteer that's pulling all the, making sure all the legal papers are delivered to you, we're your liaison between Vanguard and PARs, et cetera, but the money is, once you decide to join and make a contribution, goes directly to US Bank, and that is set up as a sweep account, and then they then, based on your funding and options for investment, would then forward it on to Vanguard to make sure it's appropriately allocated. Any questions so far? Yes.
Hi, Colleen, thank you for coming out with bad weather. Well, and I'm looking at the, I'm certain, now the financial plan you're applying. When I look at POS Direct Trustee Service Fee Schedule, you said there were 16 members in currently?
Yes.
Do you have an asset, how much an asset is the 16 members present?
We currently have, right now, over 25, just over 25 million in contributions, I'm not sure what the investment, actual investment strategy is right now, I don't have that for today, but I also have three members that have yet to make any contributions because they're still in those early stages. So, we anticipate that it is going to grow, and as we talk about the fee schedules, the beauty of this is that as more and more members join, both here in Rhode Island and others that PARs are working with that are set up under this Vanguard account, there are those economies of scale that the fees will go lower.
Sure. I'm looking at 5% for the first 25 million, which, quite true, we're currently, the 16 members are at the 5%, we'll drop to four with the next 25 billion.
So, what it's important to know, and if you, you're on page, I'm looking at, you're looking at the fee schedule, is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Page 11?
Well, no, I'm not there, actually, no, I'm looking at institutional trust custody. It's the third page that I have, now, it's not, it is not patented on mine, it just says, institutional trust custody, POS direct trustee service fee schedule.
Oh, I, you're looking at the actual legal document that would be signed, okay, good for you.
Okay.
So, what I've done is I've taken those documents and consolidated into slide number 11 for the rest of you if you're interested, so we're looking at the fees, because it's broken down into PARs, US Bank and Vanguard. So, yes, you are correct. What's important to note is that it's based on the individual portfolio, so the growth portfolio has to be at 25 million, the, so if you, whatever portfolio you or other members participate in, so it is not based on the total assets of the trust, it's the total assets within each individual funding program. So, there are three investment strategies, there is a growth, a balanced and a conservative account. So, it have to be reaching thresholds at each one of those individual investment strategies. However, it's important to note that if you were to go to a bank on your own to try to fund your OPEB program individually, you would not be able to receive these types of rates, I believe you have to have at least a $50 million contribution to even begin to see these very competitive rates.
Colleen, you could further explain to me, so basically, I'm looking at, and if I'm understanding, and I don't understand, I'm gonna defer to our planning strategy, fill in my lines. So, the annual phase, 0.5 for the first 25, 0.4 for the 25, then I look at investments, Vanguard, this is on page 12, I guess, of your slides, you pointed, you were talking about.
Right, I gave you a hypothetical.
Okay. So, would, so would it be 5% on the first 25 under POS direct trustee, and then an additional 7% on the Vanguard's investments?
Yes, that each one has a separate fee associated with it, yes, and that's why I showed on page 12 and then also on page 13, so there's some other benchmarks there to show some fee schedules, because obviously, that's important for people to know, so we thought we, this slide seemed to be helpful, to say that, what is, if I had a $500,000 investment, how much is my monthly fee going to cost to have this OPEB trust function?
Okay, now, Mr. Iglesias, if I may, if you could help me with the liberties on this part. If I heard correctly, this money would not be able to be removed from the, from the fund unless it was to administer to people's benefits, correct?
Retirees, right.
Retires, correct. Well, when I look at the additional information on page 12, it says fees may be changed by Vanguard Institutional upon 90 days written notice declined. Is there an escape clause in there for the town, if they say that the fees go up, can we, can we escape from this deal?
Yes, you have to give a 30-day notice, so if you said in 30, if you decided that you didn't want to be part of this program, the only problem, not problem, the only requirement is if you chose not to participate any longer in this OPEB funding program, you'd have to give us 30 days' notice, but you have to then move your money to another irrevocable trust, it can't just go back to the general fund or to, you know, just a private bank account, it has to go to another irrevocable trust.
All right, and I just wanted, Jason, have you had a chance to review all this, is this reflective of what's out there for us, the competition?
It's, the, the fees, yes, the difference here with why I'm presenting or wanted the trust to come in with this presentation is the economy of scales and the legal representation that they're gonna give to us, to make sure all the benchmarks are met with IRS regulations, with trust regulations. If we were to do this in-house, we do not have an expertise to create and administer this plan.
Right, and, and one of the other things is, we periodically will bring in Vanguard and PARs to come in to actually make presentations to the members to give market outlooks performance, and I know Jason has been in attendance for those, and it's been very helpful for our members, because they are then able to access these individuals, and they are also available by phone, and, you know, depending upon if we needed them to come out again, we're actually scheduling them to come out in June again, to come give us another outlook of what the each individual pools look like and what their market strategies are going forward, market outlook. I think it's also important to note that we did have one member that is a current member now that actually did all of this on their own, probably five or six years ago, that they set up their own OPEB trust, and when this opportunity came along, they did some side-by-side analysis to see if there was savings for them, and what their ultimate analysis was, is that they saved the town about $20,000 a year by moving their OPEB program to the trust OPEB funding program, so they closed out their OPEB trust, we transferred all the money over, and so the town is paying lower fees by doing that.
One more question, Mr. President, President. Mr. Iglesias, have you looked at this?
I looked at it briefly, but I was actually anticipating the presentation. I looked at the agreement briefly, but the, obviously, this is, as Jason pointed out, it's got to do with retirement benefits rather than pay from your, the key is, do you want them to be in your general, fundamental question is, do you want them to be part of your general fund, or do you want them to be in this trust that constitute both an asset and an obligation, liability and asset for the town, which once you put the money in, you can't take it out? Or do you want to pay it out as you go, which is what you're doing now?
And I think that's what, really, I want people to see, is what the dollar benefit is to go from a pay-as-you-go that we are now, to the trust, ultimately, the trust is a self-sustaining entity, the earnings on the investments pay for the retirees. So, the hope is, at some point in the future, the $688,000 for retiree healthcare we currently have in our operating budget goes away.
I think a good example of that is slide number nine in your presentation packet, and what we've tried to do is, just as Jason was alluding to, is what is the impact of pre-funding? So, right now, as I'm sure Jason has told you, in your financial statements, there's basically a footnote of what your OPEB liability is, however, moving forward in coming years, I believe it's, if it's not 2016, it's 2017, I believe, that-
We were drafting for 16 for this.
16, so that you would have to actually, with GASB 75 changes happening, that they are actually, your OPEB liabilities is actually going to be shown as a liability on your financial statements. So, there's another benefit for you to, you know, move it out of just a bank account into an OPEB trust, because if you look at page number nine, the benefit that you receive, and what we've done is, this is actually based on the town of North Smithfield's actuarial results as of 2014, and, which is the most recent, because they're only required to be done every two years. So, what we've done is, right now, the unfunded actuarial accrued liability is about 7.1 million, which is the pay-as-you-go, which is what you're doing now. Should you pre-fund your OPEB trust, you will see that there's a discount rate of about 7%, so your unfunded actuarial accrued liability then reduces down to $5.5 million. So, just by taking these small steps to pre-fund, you can show that you're reducing your ultimate liabilities. And basically, you'll see on the bottom line is that the annual required contribution, if you were to make that based on these actuaries, and I will tell you that most cities and towns are not making the annual required contribution, so you're not alone, it would, you would have to make a $788,000 just to meet your required contribution. If you pre-funded, that required contribution would reduce to 680,000. So, there are some benefits, you can look to see the percentage changes that is reflective by just doing these small amounts each year in funding for your OPEB liabilities. This is where it gets real, the technical stuff, but from, from a financial standpoint, by pre-funding and reducing your ultimate liabilities, you're helping your bond ratings, your other types of liabilities that you have in the town when the auditors are looking at your financial statement, so you become a healthier entity.
So, for me to just give a little brief explanation of what Colleen just covered is, if you remember, this year, we had a large addition to our balance sheet of the retirement funding to the state. Historically, it was never on our balance sheet, this year, it became, as a requirement to put on your balance sheet, it's about $20 million for us, we had to add. This is another seven per accounting rules that has to come on next year. If we have an asset that has an earnings power, that seven becomes 5.5. So, when you're adding 7 million to your liabilities in your balance sheet, if we have a pre-funded asset that has an earnings power, the liability goes down by about 1.6 million. So, it's value there as well as ultimately to try to get out of the operational funding of retirement benefits.
There, there are some members that have asked about if you can, you know, similarly to how you do pay-as-you-go now, you can, some of them said, well, what if we put all of the money in and then, you know, withdrew at the end of the, at the end of the quarter or at the end of the year, what is the benefit? Well, the benefit is, if your investments go up, then you're going to be making a little bit of money, but this is truly meant to be a long-term solution, where you're going to see the savings as a long-term solution. It's not meant to be the quick fix, although it can be used to help fund that. And I will tell you, there, there is no requirement that once you join that you have to make a contribution, there's no minimum that you have to submit, if, you know, if the town puts it into their budget to submit it over, then that's a great thing, I think it's a great first step. But we don't have a, a contribution amount that is required. This is a very easy program that sets up that once the resolution is passed, literally within two weeks, your OPEB trust would be set up, and Jason would be as the fund or plan administrator for the town, so he would be the one that would have to sign documents as well as the council president would have to sign a document, because that resolution gives the binding authorization for Jason to be the plan administrator or the finance director essentially. And then, basically, from there, once the documents are set, we give you the, we get everything all put together, and we say that the banks are ready to be funded and the accounts are open, and whenever you are ready, you can start to make contributions. It's as easy as that. We, we've done them, and it's less than one week, because they had to get it done by June 30 last year, and then we've had some that have taken longer just because of time commitments and scheduling.
Jason, do you know, do you know what the, what the initial contribution would be?
As Colleen mentioned, there's no required contribution, but, so, circle back to what I said initially, we have set aside about $150,000 over the last three years to start to fund this post-employment benefit trust. So, budget for 16, $100,000 was put in there, for 14 and 15, $25,000 each year was put in there, so we have 150 on hand that could start this contribution. Future contributions are related to what we put into the operating budget. So, for the 16 budget, a tax rate already supports 100,000 contribution annually, so if we kept it 100, no change to the tax rate for next year. So, it's already built into the rate based on our reserving money for this purpose in last year's budget, if that makes any sense, or what we've accumulated over the three years.
All right, thank you.
So, that would be, I believe, what our initial contribution would be, this 150, based on budget approval, and then whatever we decide to budget for next year would be what the contribution would be, whether it's the same amount, whether it's less, whether this year you fund it zero, I mean, I believe that would be on the budget process to decide.
Thank you. I have a question, this person could have done a question. It's maybe because I don't understand this. Is there a protection here for the town of North Smithfield? We pre-fund it, we maintain payments in OPEB, and other communities of Chatham live representation down on Smithfield don't. Where does that put us? Is this money gonna be, can that be touched by future legislation to help offset communities that don't fund OPEB?
No, this is, this is your OPEB money, although you are reaping the benefits of the economies of scale of being with other municipalities and school districts, it is your own account, so you don't share liability with anybody else, the state has no investment or, or no involvement whatsoever, and we just needed a legislative change in order for us to start the operations of an OPEB funding program, and it has been, if you will, blessed by the state, the treasurer, the governor's office, et cetera, which was important, because they were the ones that were pushing it, and if individual cities and towns did not start OPEB trust, they were going to enforce that it be done, and we wanted to keep it at the local level, and so that's why we did that. So, no, this is your money, you will receive a statement on a monthly basis that would show your account and the fees that are associated with that, et cetera. You would also, on a quarterly basis, receive investment updates on the pool that you selected for investment purposes and how that fund is doing and performing. And by you, I mean that they would go to find-
I understand we have dedicated funds to whomever's in, in the-
Right, so you basically, one of the things that you have to do if you decide to move forward with this is, you'd have to then pick, if you decide to move forward, that's step one, and then step two is you have to select, what's your investment strategy? What, would you want to go a conservative approach, a balanced approach, or a growth approach? I will tell you that, and it's, the trust will not make any recommendations, because that's not where our expertise is, and I think that Jason certainly will work with you on that, but we will provide you with what other, whatever information you need financially from each of the pools and how they are performing, but I will tell you that the majority of members have actually picked growth as their investment option, which was a little bit of a surprise to us. They are spread out, we have some that are in balance and a couple that are in conservative, but they are looking at it as a long-term funding option, so they're looking at growth. And they're all mutual funds within these individual investment options, so they're all individual mutual funds.
I'm just concerned that five, six years down the road, we've managed our OPEB on the community that not, I know, no one's clear, but, you know, I just, but now I see North Smithfield for someone in state legislation, while you're doing a good job, share the pain of the other community, so. Am I articulating that, David, what my concerns are?
I think you are, I, I think, I think that's a very good point, I think fundamental question is, a trust has to be created for the benefits, is this the right vehicle? And it appears that the inter-local trust, the inter-local trust is going through the trouble of, of making this connection. This doesn't have to be your choice, you could go to a bank, you could create your own OPEB trust, so that's your choice, you could go somewhere else completely, it's just an option.
Yeah, I understand, I guess what my concern is, if we don't know what could happen five, 10 years down the road, with other communities that have not, are we gonna be asked to help supplement them, even though we've been taking care of our OPEB?
Well, and, and your actuary is only going to report on your actuarial status at this point, so there, there is not going to be a big trust actuary that's gonna come in and look at everybody, if that's maybe what you're thinking, too, that the trust actuary would come in and look at the pool as a whole and say, well, you gotta help out, you know, so, Kingstown, and, and that's not the case. You have your own actuary that's going to report on what your own, you know, annual required contribution is, and what you're required to do.
Okay, so you have nine, okay, I'm just concerned what might happen with the legislation, that's all. Thanks. Excuse me, Jason, Jason, what's, what's our timeframe for acting on this?
For acting on this?
Yes.
I mean, it's kind of unlimited if you want to look at it that way, because we've set aside money and have not taken a step in action on this for three years, so, you know, if we look at it that way, we haven't acted yet, and I guess we don't have to act. I think the point of why I wanted to have this on the agenda for you to hear this is, the sooner we act, the better scenario we have of a long-term picture of our community. That's really why I got this on, on the agenda before and why it is back in front of you, is the longer we kick the can, the worse off it is for us.
And I think that if it's done before June 30, which is your end of your fiscal year, you'll see those benefits right away in your financial statements through your audit.
Does council have any more questions?
Jason?
Yes.
Excuse me. With the three different portfolios, which one would you lean towards, growth or growth balance, those like sort of portfolio?
That actually would be a discussion that I'd want to have with everybody, because that's the direction that the town chooses. I wouldn't say I have a better choice than what you'd have as a choice.
Let's play the stop. Let's play the stock market.
Basically, that's what it is, and, as a, as a, me as a man, I'm conservative, so I would go with either the balanced or the conservative approach myself. But, that being said, if there's an opportunity for us to grow, to make this asset huge in the short term by going into, you know, taking out a little more risk for a growth portfolio, maybe that's what we do initially.
Well, I was gonna say, if you take on the initial risk to get the reward, you build up your portfolio, then-
Correct.
Eventually, it's 0% down.
Correct.
I mean, we're talking years down the road.
Correct.
Still gonna be.
And I, and I will tell you that you're able to change your investment option at any time. We actually have one member that has changed it three times already, they've been in every investment option, because they thought they wanted to be in growth initially, and then they went to balance, and then they said, no, we want to be in conservative, and, you know, it, there's a document, another document that has to be sent, signed, but within a day, we can make that investment option change. So you're not locked in to the, you know, if, if you see that the stock market is not doing what you like and you'd like to change your strategy.
Is there time restrictions on how you can change your investments? So I don't, like, my personal account, I can, it's like a 30-day, if I move today, I gotta wait 30 days before I can change it.
No, I totally, we had one that went three times within, within a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay, all right. I don't want to do that much, but.
No, they're very good to work with, as far as, with PARs, and, and you'll get notification that has been changed and confirmation that you're in that investment strategy change.
Thank you.
I would also assume that as I'm getting the statements and watching performance, everybody's going to be in the loop on the direction the town should be going, so it's not a unilateral decision here at all.
Right.
It's a community decision, and I'm, I'm kind of the vehicle to make that happen, if we want to look at it that way.
Thank you.
So you said we get quarterly reports, is that-
Well-
Do you get monthly statements, which would show your assets-
Activity.
And your fees, and then, but, and you will get quarterly investment reports from Vanguard that get delivered through the trust, that would be delivered to Jason. But on a monthly basis, you'll be able to say, what I will tell you is, it's not like your bank account, unfortunately, because everything is thrown into one big fund, so PARs actually has to do some slicing and dicing to make sure everybody's getting allocated appropriately, so we are a little bit of about a lag time of a month, so if you were to invest in April, you probably wouldn't get your first statement until June. And we're working on that, because that's one of my requests to them, just be in the But at any time, if you wanted to know your balance, we could get that for you, so you don't have to wait for the, the account balance statement to come in, we would be able to get that for you anytime through a email, et cetera, request. Now, do you have, like, online access to the? No, no. No, we don't. Not yet. Someday maybe. Because it's just, it's in a whole big pool, it's not just the town as on its own.
Mike Grabco, Budget Committee. You could ask the Budget Committee to help you, I haven't seen the document. It sounds like an annuity, you've got three choices, you're gonna put this money in long term, you've got expenses, but the issue, I guess you've got to be very careful about it, is the benchmarking. When you put your money into a process, I mean, you're expecting a return on that money over the long term, so it, it should be a benchmark, I know this is new and it's hard to create a benchmark, but if you go into a conservative, balanced, or growth fund, there's an expectation of your return. And I guess a lot of times, sometimes you don't meet that expectation, and now you have issues that take, it may take 10, 20 years to recover what you're expecting, so it's a process, I think it's going to take a lot of research to try to understand what's going on. You know, treat it like an annuity, that you're putting your money into a process, where you don't pay a fee, and you have an expectation, depending on how you invest that money, and then you're gonna try to look for a benchmark, what you're comfortable with. It's a difficult decision as to, you know, what are you comfortable with this money? You don't want to lose it in the market, if the market goes sour, because it takes 10 to 20 years to recover. What happened in 2001, took 10 years to recover that loss in 2001. So it's, it's a process that, you know, it's something that I'd be cautious tonight, I think it's going to require a lot of review in the process. I was trying to understand the fee structure, I'm not sure what the return is, I mean, you have to pay these monthly fees, what's the net return on a monthly basis after you have to pay all these expenditures? Are you gonna end up with a quarter of a percent or a half a percent in the process? I don't know, that's a discussion you need to, you know, continue. The other issue too is, North Smithfield, we're benefiting from the fact that we capped our liability on the teacher's side, on the school department's side, it's a seven-year liability for health, the teachers can collect retirement for seven years or age 65, so we were very fortunate, we did cap the liability on the school department's side. We haven't done that on the municipal side for police or municipal employees, but that's a way of reducing your liability, is to try to do what we did on the school department's side by capping the liability with a, with a time limit of seven years or age 65. It's a difficult process, we could, you know, if you could spread that throughout the whole community, that would really cut down on the liability. When you talk about assets and liability, to reduce your liability from 7 million to 5.5, does that happen immediately, or does that take a long period of time to reduce that liability? I'm not sure if there's a 10-year window, you know, we're only putting a small amount of money into the program, it's hard to visualize how you reduce a liability of a million and a half if you're only putting 150,000 into the program. I don't, it's, you know, my, my comment would be, maybe you should ask the Budget Committee, Brian O'Hearn and maybe some other members, Beth Ferracy and myself, whether we can help you to analyze the process.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Director. Mr. President, Mr. Grabco, currently it's budget time, so do you think the Budget Committee would have that time to review this?
Well, we should, I mean, we should put it on the agenda and take a look at it. I don't know what the expenditure, I'd have to ask Jason, what do we, what is our cash flow for the OPEB cost on, on an annual basis? Is it 25,000, 50,000?
For expense on?
For OPEB expenses today.
For OPEB expenses, pay-as-you-go is 688,000 that we paid in retiree healthcare and, and health and dental.
For all, all?
For all, that goes through the town, the school side, I don't have it in front of me. So they're on their own, so the town is just 688,000.
688,000.
Well, that's, it's 688, pay-as-you-go plus 100 of that fund go back.
Oh, right, that's right, okay.
So that's how you get 788.
Yeah.
So do we need a moment to ask the Budget Committee to, to review this for us, for a little bit? That's my motion.
I'm gonna second that.
Thank you, Mr. Grabco.
Motion by Councilman Swinski, seconded by Councilman Nada. I'm just waiting for the discussion. Mary Ann Maric, what, Groko, please.
Mrs. House, yes, Mrs. Nada.
Yes.
Mr. Sol, and Mr. Zolanski, and Mr. Bouchet.
Yes.
Mike, yeah, Mike, you want to stop on my copy?
Yeah, that's what I was just saying, you can take my copy.
Take my copy.
I don't do anything much, so.
Just overlook my notes.
Do you mind if you give to, to, to Ms. Ferracy?
I just want my notes on. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, here we turn back to, is it the, I know the number three executive session? General laws 42-46-5A, subsection two, sessions contained conflictive litigation, potential litigation with Saka, traditional jurisdictional waste ward agreement? Motion by the Chair, so by Councilman Nada, move to executive session. Now, please, Groko, please.
Yes, yes, Mrs. Nada.
Yes.
Mr. Sol, and Mr. Zolanski, and Mr. Bouchet.
Okay, starting with, also I'd like to invite Mr. Dan Keefe as well into the executive session.